On August twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, from two P M until eight P M at Point Grashit Park.
Any discussion, council?
I just want to know, does he need a loudspeaker permit or anything if this is going to be a gospel festival? I can see one in our camp.
Um.
It will.
Yeah, it will. Right, Richard?
Put it in for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Right. Just give them a call, so they'll know. Need to do that.
That was the plan. He was hoping to find out if he would be able to have this because there is actually no, none of the reservable pavilions were reserved for this. So he was hoping to find out whether or not they were going to be able to do this prior to putting in the effort for the loudspeaker application.
Edwin, do you want to suggest with our crazy weather that we've been having, if they would like to choose an alternate date in case it does rain on them? We wouldn't want them outside.
I can suggest that to them, councilman. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion and refer this to the city attorney, Parks Department, city clerk, and for the loudspeaker permit.
So.
By Nichols?
Second.
By Bomano?
Number six, request from Lucas Natali on behalf of the Fredonia Cycling to host two central connection slow roll bicycle rides through Dunkirk on August thirty first, twenty twenty one, at six P M and September eighteen, twenty twenty one, at ten A M. We are requesting the assistance of the Dunkirk Police Department for traffic control on both, for both events.
Any discussion, council? Pretty much the same thing. Mark, I'm just going to refer this to you. So you can just refer this to Chief Ortolano. I know that Edwin, you participated in this last time.
Correct.
So it's pretty much the same room, you know, so as long as we can get some police presence. Awesome. You have first.
So.
Nichols?
Second.
Stoyl. So guys, number seven is pulled. Okay?
Number eight, loudspeaker application from Tommy Roque to use D J equipment for a party at his residence on July thirty first, twenty twenty one, from four P M until eight P M.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, well, did he get, um, any?
Yeah, I just seen it, yes.
Affected persons.
He had all his signatures around the neighborhood and everything. Yeah, that's it. I didn't see that on my attachment. Edwin and Raymond just showed up.
Great, great. Thanks.
Yep. That would be my usual.
Okay.
Nichols?
Okay.
Stoyl.
Number nine, loudspeaker application from Jane Henderson to use speakers for a picnic on August twenty 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 one, from three P M until seven P M at the lower pavilion at Point Grashit.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, be my usual.
So.
Second.
Nichols, Stoyl.
Number ten, loudspeaker application from Kathleen Peterson on behalf of the Chautauqua County Rural Ministries to use band equipment on August seventh, twenty twenty one, for an old fashioned street fair at three eleven Washington Avenue from twelve P M until four P M.
Any discussion?
That coincides with number one.
Correct. Yep.
So.
Nichols, Bomano.
Number eleven, loudspeaker application from Ronaldo Miranda on behalf of Second Chance Kids to use speakers and microphone on July thirty first, twenty twenty one, from one P M to five P M at the Wright Park Basketball Courts.
Any discussion, council?
So.
Nichols?
Second.
Bomano?
Number twelve, loudspeaker application from Jason Merritt on behalf of Merritt Wineries to use microphones and speakers from August sixth through eighth, twenty twenty one, at the Chautauqua County Fairgrounds for America's Great Country Wine Festival.
Any discussion, council?
So.
So be my usual. Nichols? Second. By Bomano? Okay, reports to standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilman Bomano?
Nothing here.
Councilman Stoyl?
It's going to be a public safety meeting on July twenty eighth, two o'clock, in the mayor's conference room. Would you please add that to the calendar, Edwin?
Absolutely, sir.
Is it all you got?
That's it.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing for here.
Okay, me neither. Moving on to unfinished business, seeing none, go to prefiled resolutions.
Number fifty, resolution authorizing submission of C D B G Cares Act grant from New York State Office of Homes and Community Renewal.
Any discussion, council?
Do you know Jill wants to expand on it here as well as regular meeting?
Sure. Um, the city receiv- the state received a allocation of funding through the Cares Act, some of which is designated for entitlement communities and some which is designated for non entitlement communities. Um, we were invited to, um, to submit an application. This particular application is to install Wi Fi hotspots all throughout Point Grashit and Wright Park and to purchase cellular, solar cellphone charging stations, which will be installed at the point, at the pier, and at Wright Park.
Good. Fifty-one.
Number fifty-one, resolution rescinding loudspeaker permit for Unique Car Club.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, new business? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Oh.
By Stoyl?
Second.
By Nichols, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Bomato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Atlarge Vandenvoer.
Aye.
Workshop's adjourned.
Hey Edwin, can I?
Yes.
Just make sure they, this is.
I don't want to talk in the summer. I know, I know.
Just do one, two.
They don't know anything.
Two special winners, two for five. Twenty eighth. You want to put four slots up. No matter what happens. I was talking to some of the firefighters and they do like the checks. Yeah. Yeah. So did you get my email? So what do you, so what do you? Can I do a special meeting? I mean, if we can, if we need, if we can wait till the next meeting, that's fine. But if it's, if it's a matter of using the money, then I gotta have a special meeting on social media. I just want down here for us. I just, because I just, I don't want to.
Did you guys get a letter from Keith Mason sending the, sort of the money they wanted?
Somebody said they gave it, I didn't get it. I think it's down there. Somebody, Jim Rowles. If you have a chance, if you can get your hand out or just.
They contracted with the person, so it should be, I haven't heard a date. I think she wanted to have it done by the end of this month, but I don't know what day.
How much more is in?
Sure.
Last time we took someone for school seven.
Randy directing traffic.
Jim Rowles involved in this? Going to go through tomorrow?
That's from Nancy, one seventy Lincoln. I'll try to find out. How about I email it right now?
He's got a different meaning for cat house, so do I.
Just do whatever you want. Just like I said, you know, figure it out with her. I'm not, I get frustrated talking to myself, just figure it out. I'm going through one. So you give me a date. If it needs to be done, I need a special meeting, a special meeting set. If you want it done this week, we have it done this week. Because I know it's going to pass these days.
Tuesday, August third.
Yes.
Eleven A M.
To call the regular order of the common council meeting to order on July 20th, 2021, at 5:33 PM. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams.
Uh, he's absent tonight.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Here.
Councilmember-at-large Vandenboeffer.
Here. Also, we also have Chief Edwards excused and Chief Ortolano there excused for tonight's meeting. So, at this time, I need a motion going to executive session for CDBG.
Pledge first?
What? Oh, we'll do the pledge first, yep. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of our Constitution, the Constitution of America, and to the liberty of our citizens.
Now, I need a motion going to executive session for CDBG grant.
Make the motion.
By Bemano.
Second.
Second by Nichols. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandenboeffer.
Aye. Carrie, Marty, you want to take the minutes?
Yep.
Thanks.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, July 6th, 2021, was presented to the mayor on Friday, July 16th, 2021. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect, and witness whereof I have here to set my hand and the seal of the city of Dunkirk this 20th day of July, 2021.
Need a motion dispensing the reading of the minutes? By Nichols, second by Bemano.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Vandenboeffer.
Aye, Carrie. Reading of the privilege of the floor regulations?
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing a group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman-at-large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman-at-large Vandenboeffer shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste, or are slanderous or non-germane to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limits specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired.
Okay, step up, state your name and your address.
Chris Rodriguez, 324 Townsend Street, Dunkirk, New York. Speaking on behalf, first, that kids at Promise, we run that organization to excel. You guys granted us 10 grand with CDBG money, and we just want to say thank you for that. And then, I was speaking on behalf of, I was speaking on behalf of Small Town Big Minds right now, and the Unique Car Club. I just wanted to voice my, my opinion on just going about communicating with, with everybody, about finding solutions, instead of just, you know, banning people right from the jump when something goes wrong, you know, finding common ground. You know, I talked to him for a while, and, you know, he told me that on his flyer for 45 days before the, the, um, the car show, he had, he said audio competition right on there, you know, and he said it in Spanish, but, you know, communicating and making a phone call and asking, hey, man, you having an audio competition, how long is it gonna be? And, I, he said, was it the first one you had? Yeah, first one. And we already talked to him, he said that he wouldn't even have another one if we could find common ground to approve, so you guys wouldn't rescind his loudspeaker permit, because he's, um, he's just having a band this time, he's not having an audio competition. I know, those do get kinda loud, they do get a little bit loud, and, um, you know, another solution to that is what I've seen in my travels is, uh, when we lived, when I lived in Santa Ana, they had a community calendar board that like just showed every, every event that was happening that day, you know, if he's having a car show that day, and we see, oh, there's a wedding, oh, there's, um, the Dunkirk High School graduation happened that time, maybe we find a, a better solution than, uh, just trying to ban them right from the get-go. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of Puerto Rican and Hispanic heritage in our community, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're being represented, um, and finding common ground to, so that, you know, we're having these uncomfortable conversations with how to find solutions, so everybody's involved. That's why we did the Cultural Diversity Bureau, to represent everybody. But, um, I have a letter that I want to give to you guys to, to try to get representation from, um, the Hispanic community. Some of our objectives that we want are the approval of the Puerto Rican festival, that was something that happened for decades. Um, you know, there was one foul incident in the past, but sometimes you're gonna have, you know, bad eggs in, in all cultures and all races. Um, we'd also like, uh, to do a Puerto Rican mural, specifically to our culture and heritage, um, a location to be determined, we haven't, um, chosen a location yet, but that's just something we're asking for approval with. Uh, we would also like you to rescind, um, Unique Car Clubs, uh, not to rescind Unique Car Clubs, uh, loudspeaker permit just for their band, they're not gonna have, um, an audio competition this time on August 14th, um, if we could just, you know, find common ground there. Um, I'd put it down here, we would like to see Unique Car Club allowed to have car shows in the Dunkirk, New York area, if we are in agreement that they will not have a car audio tournament unless it's approved by the city in respect to other events happening in the surrounding area. Um, and also, uh, we would like to ask to have one day of music on the pier, be Hispanic music, um, and to have, uh, a Puerto Rican music day for music on the pier. Um, oh yeah, and one last thing, um, we would like representation in, maybe in one of our streets being renamed, of, um, renaming Columbus Street to Thayeno Avenue, because it is, Columbus is a big historical figure in America, but he's a big tyrant in our community, in our heritage, um, and that would kind of like, be like having a street named after the guys who bombed, bombed 9/11, or, you know, flew planes in the 9/11, um, and living on a street named after them. That's what it's like for Puerto Rican people living on a, a street named, uh, Columbus Street. So, that's why I wanted to leave this letter for you guys, and, um, just respectfully ask that you don't rescind their, um, speaker permit, and, um, I appreciate the, the grant, and I appreciate all the approvals you guys have given us so far, and worked with us so far. Um, it's gonna be more opportunities for us to communicate and find solutions to make this better. Um, can I speak on my own behalf, outside of Small Town Big Minds, real quick?
Yeah, but I just wanna just mention something to you first, before you go to the next one.
Okay.
Is that, you said the flyers were out, being a councilman-at-large, I never saw a flyer, I didn't know that event was even going on.
Okay.
All right, so I just want to give you my point of view also.
Yeah, absolutely.
By all means, I want people to have fun.
Yeah.
But, when the music got so loud, that the whole city of Dunkirk was listening to it.
Yeah.
And we had to send the officers up there several times to tell you to turn it down, and you didn't.
Yeah.
That's where we have to, this is why we present the laws and they enforce the laws.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's the only reason. I mean, I'm glad you guys are having a good time up there, but when, you know, when, you, you don't understand what we went through that day.
Yeah, all the complaints and stuff like that.
It was unbelievable.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I could hear it like I was staying outside my house.
Yeah.
The, you know, I had people calling from the graduation party, the people from the wedding, the people that live on Lafayette and Green Street that are having birthday parties.
Okay.
You know, and after so many times, the police officers, Mark, you can, you're up there, they went up there and asked nicely if you could turn it down, it seemed like you got hired.
Yeah, and, um, from his perspective, I believe he invested about like $3,000 to $4,000 in, in audio trophies.
So, the next time, why don't you call me?
Mm-hmm.
Call me, let's have a one-on-one sit-down.
Yeah.
Tell me exactly what's going on.
Yeah.
It would have, that would have worked out perfectly.
Exactly.
I can't read your mind.
No, 100%. So, that's, that's where it comes into, uh, you know, having these talks like this.
Yes.
So, now, get your, get your number.
I totally agree.
And then make the phone call, let you know, so that we, we're not just, you know, gossiping in corners.
Fantastic job with all the other community events you're doing.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
We support that, obviously.
Yeah.
We're giving you more money, and if we can give you more money with the CDBG, we would, that's what we just went in and we had a meeting about.
Yeah, appreciate that.
We support that.
Yeah, appreciate that, um, and we're grateful for that, too. Um, uh, in regards to all the calls, um, the audio competition can't get real loud, Puerto Rican music is just naturally loud. Um, and that's where we, I came with the solutions of, he already said that was his first audio competition, but when you make the phone call to the police, he's in his mind, losing out on three to four grand in trophies that he invested in for the audio competition, and now trying to panic and get them passed out to everybody, and with the loss of not making the car show happen the way, you know, he had planned it with everybody coming, you know, there's a good 3,000 people there, you know, that was, that's, that's big for the city.
It is.
Um, but, so in his mind, he, he's, he's panicking a little bit, because he invested a lot, and then, you know, the police come and say, turn it down, it's hard to turn the music down for an audio competition, you know, the whole point is to turn it up. So, um, I definitely understand, you know, both points of view, I definitely understand, especially a wedding, you know, happening at the time, and, and the Dunkirk High School graduation, you gotta hear that going on, and that's, you know, just another thing, just, um, like a community calendar board, where we see all the events going on, we have an audio competition, we're like, hey, we're not gonna put that on this, this, and this day, um, just finding solutions. Um, but, yeah, that's all I wanted to speak on, I'm at.
Lieutenant Timmerman, if you want to add anything to this also, you know, feel free, I, I pretty much said what I had to say, and what I said last time.
I really don't know what type of audio competition went, took place, do you have that time, right?
What time does, what time does the audio competition?
I started the audio competition at noon. And it went, it was supposed to go to 5, to 5:00 PM, and 5:00 PM, I was gonna give out trophies, um, the police. Yeah, the police came, asked me if I had a permit, I told them I didn't need one, they left. Came back and says, why, you need a permit, can you lower the music down? I'm like, it's real hard to lower this music down, but what I could do is, I could go rush through, I could pick out the top 200 cars, I'll hand out 200 trophies, and I'll end the show, the show's done. So, I did that as quick as I could, as I could. I went through a thou- 1,194 cars, and that wasn't even counting the cars that were still piled in. So, I went through, I handed everybody their trophy, and there was three police officers that were there with the, the guys from the fairgrounds that showed up, and they were like, everything's fine, you know, everybody's even, we're fine, the music is all shut off. And then, the next day, I wake up and I have a police officer in front of my house, giving me one citation, which, yes, I do understand, and I accept this little citation, but two days later, coming that back down to my house again, and giving me four more, for the same thing, when you just gave them to me all the same, at the same day, you know, and you tell me, you're not gonna find me, if I could get everything shut down. I do it as quick as possible, I give out the trophies, I rush everybody out of there, you know, no incidents, no arrests, no problems, no fights, yes, I understand, there was a lot of people that had graduations, I didn't know there was a graduation that day. I went to the fairgrounds, I rented the fairgrounds, they told me that, uh, that they had a graduation the next day, I was like, okay, the graduation's on, on the next day, I have to leave the place clean, that's all I knew that there was, I didn't know there was a wedding, and I apologize from the bottom of my heart, and from my group, for the, for the pride, because it wasn't my attempt, if I knew there was other stuff going on, I would have waited, I would, instead of doing my music competition at noon, I would have waited till 1 o'clock.
Well, what's the graduation time on September 11th?
Graduation, he started his first competition at noon, it's odd, it'd be weird in the graduation.
Do we know what time graduation was at?
No, I don't, I'm just going by. No, I don't, I'm just going by.
I believe it's more than just the noise competition as stated, we, we began receiving phone calls as early as eight-thirty in the morning.
Yes.
For the noise. And that continued till about eight PM.
Yeah.
That evening. And it was constant, continuing complaints from all over the city, including Fredonia.
Yeah.
And we had to respond to that.
Yeah, understandable.
At about three fifteen PM, myself and Chief Lord Waddle Diggle there, we spoke with you, and you explained your predicament with the competition, and Chief Lord Waddle explained that you were in violation of the city noise ordinance at that point.
Yeah.
And then you'd be cited for continuing, you know, that noise. You said you would do the best you can, you were gracious, and I, I got it handed to you, you were, you do know how to throw an event, it was well-attended, we had, didn't see any other issues there other than the noise, and that's what we explained to you.
Yeah.
And, and the traffic problem that, and congestion that was causing, but I think that worked itself out, once your organizers tried to get, you know, the people in, and quick. So, it was, it was clearly stated to you that, and that's why the counts were issued for the noise ordinance, is because the noise continued throughout the evening past, the time that we spoke to you.
Okay. You know, the, they, the noise was continued, but my show was over, you had three police officers there at six o'clock, and I had everybody out of the park, there was nobody left there. So you're gonna give me four more citations, because everybody else goes around Dunkirk and decides to make noise, so you're gonna give me four more tickets?
The noise was continued from there?
No, the noise wasn't continued from their officer, because the people were gone at six o'clock, and the person, and the fairground owners were on the property, and three police officers were there, too. And actually, the police officer that gave me the citation was there when everybody was leaving.
Yeah, I called Dave Wilson to get down here to shut you guys down, so that's, I know for a fact that he was down here, so. It's just, so, what we're gonna, what, what we're gonna do, we'll decide, and we'll take, we'll take this under consideration tonight, but like I said, it's not about the, the car show, it's about, it's, it's about the noise.
You know.
And it's about the vehicles driving around the city of Dunkirk, that's why we're raising the, the noise fees.
Yes.
So, it's just, it's out of control.
I, I understand that, that part.
And I'm not pointing that at you, believe me, I'm, I'm pointing that at everybody around here.
You know, I, I've always come, this is my third or fourth year coming and doing the car shows. I've always come, I've always asked Edwin for my permits, I've always, you know, I've asked for permits with loudspeaker permit, and I've always been denied the loudspeaker permit for car audio competition. So, he's like, take the car audio on, they'll give it to you. So I take the car audio, I usually do the band or a DJ, no problems, I always get it. But when I, you know, this, this car show that you guys are taking the loudspeaker away permit from me, it specifically says on the permit, DJ. I understand, I, I don't need a loudspeaker permit, I need, I have the loudspeaker permit just for a DJ. I don't need the car audio, because I'm not doing the car audio competition. I was even coming, willing to come up and ask the PDA for two police officers for that day. My group is willing to pay the wages of those two police officers at those, for those hours that they're there, we're willing to pay for their, their wages for like that, it gives the city a peace of mind. If somebody's there and they're breaking the law, fine them, it's on city property.
Yeah, I had a meeting with Chief Lord Waddle on Monday about it, so he did tell me that.
You know, I, it's, I, I, I do this, I give a lot back to the community, I don't, I do it all out of pocket, it's me and my wife and my club, you know, there's, it's not a lot of us. You're not gonna see Unique Car Club up and down, racing down streets. I'm forty-five years old, most of my members are all in their thirties.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
And sometimes that's, that's all it takes, is, you know, just communicating, finding solutions like that. Last thing I just wanna say is just, you know, just for the city of Dunkirk to try to, you know, I, I've traveled a lot and been, been around the world my time in the military and stuff like that, and there is just a lot of opportunity when humans work together, to try to make, you know, things happen in our community, and we have a really beautiful community on a bayfront at that. So I, we, we're gonna be Small Town Big Minds, you know, Two XL, partnering Revitalize Dunkirk, I have another nonprofit that I'm starting that waiting for a declaration letter from the IRS. So we're gonna be coming with a lot of letters and a lot, and, you know, we're trying to move things quickly, we get people to working together, we get the approval, we know how to raise money quick, because we practice group economics, people put their money, every ten dollars, every twenty dollars, every hundred dollars, people don't gotta be rich to make, you know, do a project, you know. We did five grand for the, the art mural, and another five grand for the, the community ice rink, and another raised three or four grand for the soft, for the softball tournament, for the kickball field we're gonna do in the fourth ward. So, you know, having these, you know, talks like this, and it just helps, you know, to make things happen. So if we could get your number for future reference, just so we could have these talks, that, that would be great.
Sounds good, thanks, Chris.
I would like to give this letter to you guys?
Sure, yep.
You gonna say something?
I do wanna address the situation at hand, between all of us that received phone calls on that Saturday, we had over five hundred phone calls, and they started at seven minutes after eight in the morning. And, I'm a car buff, I raced cars in my youth, I have all the respect for cars, but right now, especially after this past Sunday with the car show, I think the city of Dunkirk has outgrown the enthusiasts, as did crowds, the spectators, and the participants. You had how many people at your car show? Was it nineteen hundred?
I had, I had over three thousand people come to the car show.
Right.
I had over a thousand one hundred and ninety-four cars.
I think we need to come to some kind of a mutual ground where it can accommodate your exhibitors and the spectators, that everybody would be able to, I mean, you might wanna think and work with the fairgrounds again with the city, and do something in collaboration, so that it, it could be a fun time and had by all, without any aggravation and grief. And I don't know if you wanted to do a sound competition and take that, like Jijin said, to where they have the Blue Heron Festival, where you could have the, the noise blaring, and no one would bother you. I don't know if you wanna do that as an alternative.
You see, I, I, I do the shows because I wanna attract people to the, to the community.
Right.
And the business. I have never done the loudspeaker competition, so I'm like...
It's new to you.
It's, it's not new, 'cause I've been to them, and I've helped manage them, and so I figured, if I did one here, I came in, asked, don't need no permits, I'm like, okay, fine, I, I'm, I got a green light, I could go. So I went ahead and I did it, you know. If I knew I was gonna run into this much trouble and lose everything, I wouldn't even bother.
I just wanna add, though, if you're gonna do an organized event like that, come just as you're doing right now to council, and say, where do I go, what do I do, what do I need to do? That opens up the communication between everyone.
Because that's why...
Am I right, Paul?
That's why I jumped up and did it.
I used to get it all the time.
Just come to the meetings and ask the questions, we're here to work with you.
That's why I jumped up and did it at the fairgrounds, 'cause I figured, it's a bigger place, you know, with the weather, the way it was, I'm not doing it, I can't get a loudspeaker permit for that kind of music that I'm doing at the point, so I know, I'm like, imagine a thousand one hundred and something cars, and people were still piling in.
Right.
At, at the point, there's, there's no way. I was gonna get in trouble, so I figured, I jump up to the fairgrounds, I rent the fairgrounds, and I do it up there, and then in August, I do my quiet one, which the Hot Rod Association shows up, you know, it's just quiet, you know. I, I do the one at the point, quiet, you know, I came in, they're like, Juan Rivera, last time you did it, you know, the two, the exhaust, okay, I won't do it, I won't do the exhaust. That's, you know, all I, all I wanna do is work with you guys. If you guys tell me you could do it, but you can't do this, I'm fine with it. You know, they told me last year, this year when you go to do it, you can't do the loud, the loud exhaust. I didn't do it last year, I didn't do it this year, because I know if I do it, I'm gonna get in trouble.
My question to you is, how many do you expect, car-wise, to show up for the date in August?
To be real honest with you, I've been, I've been promoting the one in August, but with everything that's been going on here, everybody's like backed out, I don't expect more than five hundred cars.
That's a lot of cars for the smaller.
Though, the year before, I had seven hundred cars at the point.
That's what I'm trying to explain. The point is not big enough for that type of adventure, would you not agree, Mayor?
Well, we've had car shows there with more than seven hundred cars, and we've had no problems with that. But I do agree that if we have a thousand or more cars, then maybe that's not gonna be comfortable.
No, and that's, that's where it goes, that's where, you know, I do the one at the point, and between five and seven hundred cars always show up, five or seven hundred, you know. You throw a loudspeaker competition, you got people, I got people that came from Florida, from Massachusetts, I got people that come from all over the United States, because it's the battle of the fittest, you know. Everybody has their audio, everybody has their group, so the same group doesn't compete against each other, they compete against a group from Buffalo that came down with ten of their cars, so they compete, they compete in intervals of thirty seconds. You, one car here, one car here, three people standing in the middle, where are the judges? Go ahead, turn on, thirty seconds, shut off. Thirty seconds, turn on, shut off. But, I understand, it is loud.
Yes.
And, you know, I would like, in the future, to do an event like this, if the, if the city gives me the permit to do it, but the thing is, I only ask, if they gave me the permit, I only ask for a window, you know. If there's something going on in the city, just let me know, I'll move the window, you know. If I can have it from noon, or one o'clock to five o'clock, five o'clock, everybody shuts off, six o'clock, I give out trophies, everybody has to, everybody has to obey that rule once I set it. Whoever doesn't obey that rule, if I have to come in and pay the PDA again, for four police officers, I'll come in and pay it. Whoever at five o'clock doesn't, shut off, give them the fine. They don't wanna listen, give them the fine, tell them they gotta leave. I give them that permission.
Okay.
My other concern was...
Dance, we gotta go off the topic.
Yeah, and just, I, it's the spectators, Mayor. We have to have parking for the spectators that come to view the magnificent cars that are on display. So that is the dilemma that the city is in. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
I'm Natalie Lutskowiak, and I live at forty-six East Front Street. Since the Unique Car Club Show is a new type of event for our city, it's in its beginning and development stages, with types of noise instrumental to an urban car show that we were not aware of, such as a loudspeaker competition. The Unique, Unique Car Club is a charity-driven event that brings in appreciated monies in the community, and they deserve another chance. Juan Rivera, the owner, has proven his word before, he has left the fairgrounds in tip-top shape this year, after last year's issue. And it really seems like he's, I mean, he's expressing, you know, he, that he wishes, and he's trying to create a car show that is condoning to the city and its residents, and also one that is conducive to the culture of the urban car shows known throughout our country. So I'm, I have a, maybe perhaps tickets until sold out would limit the cars and people conducive to our city, but it's in all of our best interests to listen and communicate with our younger generations, even though the new things they do are foreign to us older folks, so let's be inclusive in order to have a cooperative and successful society. Thank you.
Ned Devine, six eighteen Main Street, Dunkirk, New York. And to be transparent, as I've, I've been told before, I am the chair of the City Democratic Committee. The reason why I came forward tonight to speak was with regard to the CDBG funds, and now I saw that you guys went into executive session, and maybe something happened with that. I just implore you to, to follow the CDBG guidelines, to follow, you know, those. The city has been in trouble over and over again when we misappropriate those funds, when we, when we make hasty decisions, and I would, I would urge you to reconsider, just to make sure that you are following the CDBG guidelines, and that we are not going to endanger our entitlement funds from CDBG. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ronaldo Miranda, and I reside at seven forty-six Grant Avenue, Dunkirk. I'm here to represent Second Chance Kids. I also have a partner who's currently not here with me, unfortunately, due to an accident, so I'd like to speak on his behalf as well. His name is Stanley Marchucci. Stanley Marchucci is a great pillar in our, in our community. He actually coaches football teams for kids and basketball as well. He currently has six kids that he is taking on his own behalf to teach them about entrepreneurship, which is great, they're only about, from five till thirteen, and only speaks about his character and what he's trying to do. So that's my partner, and what I'm trying to do is just to get the community together, mainly businesses, to try to help these kids in their, in their, in their city. I have a local business here in our community, I have several of them, one of which is a Second Street Mini Mark, over there on Second Street in Dunkirk. I could witness a lot of things that bothers me to the core, one of which is seeing these kids that don't have anything to do, and they just walk around the streets with nothing to do, and they get in trouble because of that. They also have a lack of family presence, no mother, no father. I have one kid who's around the corner from me that does not have a mother and father, he's only eleven years old, his mother died at birth, and his aunt is taking care of him, who's on, she's only nineteen years old. So we have two kids raising each other. Those are the struggles that I see every day within our community, and I'm just trying to get these kids together, to try to show them some hope, give them something different than what's currently being provided to them. And when I was a kid, my greatest ambition was to be a basketball player. I wanted to go to college, I wanted to be in NBA, and that never happened. For me, I lost focus after that, I had no one else there for me to show me there was other things available to me. I lost, I gave up hope, and unfortunately, I became a statistics in our community. However, I cleaned myself up to show everyone in our community that people can make mistakes, and it doesn't matter, you know, we can always come back, we can always change, and we can help our community out. Our main focus is to teach these kids something to, you know, to give them some hope, encouragement, to come back to our community, and to do the same thing as we did, and to make it better. That's pretty much what I'm here for. Thank you for listening to me, have a good day.
Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
My name's John Way, I live at four eleven Heaven Street, Dunkirk, New York. I'm just curious about some of the street situations in this city. The streets are terrible, potholes everywhere, you go from one street to the next on the corner, you're in a pothole. I live across the street from the P-Tech building, lot of traffic on that. live across the street from the P-Tech building, lot of traffic on that street now. And I don't know, I understand the departments have been shrunk, but I mean, are you gonna blacktop, are you gonna fill any of these potholes, or what? I mean, it's crazy. It's crazy. I, I don't understand. You can't do blacktop in November, or December, that's not the time to do it. I used to help Olson's out. And, uh, I know a little bit about the business, but I can't understand why things, every, every city truck I see driving around has two people in it. Why don't they put a pad in there? You see a pothole, mark it down. Get something set up, they gotta do something. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. Randy, you wanna comment on that?
We, we agree with that, and, uh, we've had a record-setting month. Uh, we had three 100-year rainfall events in the month of July. The, at the end of June, we were doing well with the pothole patching, and we got, we have not been back down to normal since then, and you see three peaks here, almost one a week. And then, the saturation of the ground and, and of the roads, you can't really patch a pothole when the roads are wet. So the guys are a little bit behind because of that. Where they do patch the potholes, they're doing a great job. Take a look out here on Washington Avenue and Third Street, they do the whole route, and it's perfect. So, uh, we did ask, uh, the city engineering technician to mark some of the areas on Evans Street today, and so you probably see some orange marks on there that happened today, and he called those in for immediate attention. Uh, some of these potholes don't get any, any small. So, we agree with you, uh, we've had some weather issues that were very unusual. Uh, I assure you that our crews will work very hard to get caught up, and we do have a paving program, uh, that's ready to go. The Courtney Street Mill and Fill, and which would include some of Evans Street paving, is on the list for this year. The city engineering technician's working on the specifications to go out the bid for that. And the street supervisor has, has a list of things that are gonna be shared services, too. The, uh, we, we're behind in shared services because 2020, uh, the county that does the shared services for us, uh, was committed to a lot of projects in 2020 that they didn't do. So now they have the 2021 projects, plus catching up on the 2020 projects. So, no excuses, we oughta be able to figure out a way to maybe patch in the rain, or whatever, but we got, we have new situations to take care of. We agree with you, and we'll do our best to catch up and fix them.
I appreciate that, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Hello, everyone. I'm Erica Lopez, I represent the Outpour Project here on East Fourth Street in Dunkirk. And, um, we've been for the past two years here now, and the reason why I'm here, I just wanted to share a little light on what we're doing, and what we're seeing here in the community. Um, we've had the pleasure to serve our community during COVID, which was a very tough time for many people, and we were able to serve them. Being an emergency outlet, we were able to give food, we were also able to provide food from the USDA, and do a lot of things here in the, in the community. Um, now that we're moving out of COVID, and a lot of things are opening back up, there's still a great need. And, um, this, this need is not only Hispanic, it's, um, there's, we know of the drug problem in our city, the problems that are hurting families, the overdoses. Um, this is not a respecter of, you know, of race, or culture, it's, it's, it's a big problem. And, um, it continues from generation to generation. And that's where we're here, um, trying to work on prevention, trying to work on, um, inner healing, um, dealing with the roots of these issues with our young people, before they, they further to do what they're doing. And, um, the main reason why I'm here is because we've been able to get a truck, which we're calling it, um, "The Church Has Left the Building." We have more than almost 400 churches in our city, and I really believe a lot of these problems are the church. I think the church has to rise up to help spiritually, to help, um, with families, to help unite families, to help heal marriages, um, heal children that have been affected, um, through our foster care system, which, we're not even gonna get into that, what's going on right now in the foster care system. But, um, we wanna go out in the streets. Um, the plan is not to, um, play loudspeaker music. Um, that's not our, our plan, and I know many times that's the quick shutdown, when we say we're gonna do church outside, it's, we, um, we need permits, we need loudspeaker. That's not what we're looking to do. We're looking to go out and actually find the needs in the community, whether it's, it's, um, food needs, which is a big deal. Um, a lot of our children are not eating, they're going to bed hungry, and when we run up to Second Street, we get to see that. They come to us, they tell us they're hungry, they haven't eaten. Parents are on drugs, or parents are, you know. So our goal is that everywhere we go, we're gonna be able to give food to these children, um, be able to bless the children, whether it's in the parks. Um, I know, um, you're gonna see me promoting things in the parks, that doesn't mean, though, that we're going to put loudspeakers and bring the drums, and I know that's, that's a lot of times we get shut down for things like that, but that's not what we're looking to do. So when, um, I just wanna put light on what the Outpour Project is doing, so when you do see our trucks pull up, when you do see, um, we're gonna be working with also the, the drug program here in the city, um, a lot of the families that, that are on the, the methadone, the Suboxin, and all the other things, trying to see how we can wean them off these things, where people aren't actually coming to us that they've been on Suboxin for 10 years, because that is not the goal of these drugs. The goal of these drugs is to help people, to cure, and to live fruitful lives. So, um, that's what we're here doing. I just wanted to put a face, I will be writing some letters soon. We're looking to do more events to find out what the churches in the area do offer, and if they offer something, we don't wanna recreate wheels, and do stuff that is already available in a lot of the programs in our community. So that's what we're gonna do, um, with the letter that I'm just turning in, um, for the, for September, it's gonna be for that, it's not gonna be to, um, to just have a church event, that's not the goal. So the Outpour Project will be hitting the streets, um, starting August, and we will be in all the loan income, um, the projects, housing, all those places, and we will be doing that every week, um, making sure that the kid, the kids out here are, are being fed and being taken care of. So I just wanted to share that with everyone.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, Jeanette Delgado, 309 Dup Street, Dunkirk, New York. Um, I just wanna thank all the fire department and whatnot, um, that helped my friend, he's actually my neighbor, Stanley Martucci, get out in record time. Uh, he's doing good with a broken leg. Um, a few years ago, I came, and I said, you know, it's time that we need to start doing stuff with the kids. And I understand that, although I love all you guys, um, it comes to a point where you're gonna pass a torch, and I think a lot of the individuals that showed up here today are gonna be some of those torch bearers in the future, where they're stepping up, and they're stepping out of their pockets, and with their own free time to do a lot of the things that you guys have done so gratefully for 30-plus years now. And, um, I think, like you said, you weren't knowledgeable of the event, which I can comprehend, so I believe, you know, calendar system, or some kind of more of a communication between you all and the public that you serve would be great, as that much of a transparency, we don't always get transparency in government, but this is a transparency that's kinda necessary. Um, and I feel like you guys have a lot of tools in your boxes, that you guys need to reach out, as the people that represent us and the future of our city, and get ahold of some of these people, and teach them how to network, which I know has been done with Chris. Um, and, you know, give them all the things that they need in order to make this successful, because if the youth, which is your youth, maybe not so mine, sorry, um, if they don't start stepping up, there's no future for our city, for the children, and then they're just going to end up, you know, repeating their parents' problems, so. But, I really loved the way this beginning portion of it was. Normally, when we try to banter back and forth, it, it used to be shut down, or you can't, it wasn't as open as a floor, but I think a lot of things were solved and accomplished today, at least to a certain extent, where maybe more open conversations, because these guys really don't see you that often, or have ways to get ahold of you all the time, and this is about us trying to get a little transparency, at least twice a month. So, anyways, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Public portion is closed. Okay, communications and mayor including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few announcements. First of all, the HUD monitoring, yesterday we completed a week-long HUD monitoring audit session, which they do every few years. And I'm proud to report that the city received a glowing response from Karen Kissed, our HUD field representative. One of the things she looked at was overall management of the programs, and stated that after review, she has no concerns or issues with how the programs are managed, and the city is doing a fantastic job. She went on to say that in her 31 years of doing her job for HUD, we are the most responsive and well-organized grantee she has worked with. She said she was very pleased with our unwavering commitment to the program, and the entire Buffalo Field Office is proud of how Dunkirk has turned around the program from where it was when it got into so much trouble. I would like to publicly take this time to commend the find-outstanding job our current Director of Planning and Development, Jill Mo, is doing with her team. And working with Jill, um, in the short period of time that we've had together, I can tell you that there are so many issues that we deal with, uh, with these grants as they come in. These, these funds come in with many strings attached, and we're not just talking CDBG funds, we're talking about, um, funds for all of our projects that we do. Um, and so these things are not easy, we deal with a lot of issues, some of them are, are related to meeting deadlines and things of that nature. It's a very stressful position to carry, and I commend Jill for a very nice job. I sat in on that monitoring, uh, session, uh, as they closed it out, and I was very proud to be the mayor, to hear the very nice things that they were stating about our city. Revitalize Dunkirk, uh, they recently purchased and donated five new bicycle air pumps that will be installed around the city. They have also been busy planting trees and flowerbeds, and I think they are doing a wonderful job. I appreciate their hard work and dedication to our city. I'd like to thank Revitalize Dunkirk, there's so many different things that they collaborate with us to do. They're very easy to work with, they understand the city and our needs, and some of the issues that we deal with, um, sometimes we can't get to some of the, the things that they are paying attention to, and so I certainly appreciate it, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge it. Regarding the potholes, I wanna tell you again that this is an issue I would like to bring up to council. In my opinion, uh, the current system that we have, um, isn't efficient. I think we can do better. I think we have to be creative, and thinking of different ways. We obviously don't have the proper equipment to do the milling and paving, uh, but there's cost-effective ways to do it, probably collaborating with other municipalities is the way to go under shared services. The problem that we're having with those shared services, that's, that we are on their schedule, and there's other municipalities involved, so we usually won't get our roads taken care of until the tail end of the season. Um, so I don't think that that is, uh, what our city residents want or expect. I think that we need to, um, be creative again, come to the table, and come up with a different way of paving our roads. Uh, also wanted to announce that last week, we did have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the point, the new business there, Sundays, they're doing jet ski rentals, paddle boats, and kayaks. Uh, while it was raining, and we were a little bit wet, um, it was still an excitement for me as mayor to see progress on our waterfront once again. These are, uh, activities that'll be happening, uh, throughout the summer on our waterfront, and it's nice to see. And regarding the Unique Car Show, I just wanted to, um, again, reiterate to, uh, the gentleman that came up, that, uh, you know, the music was loud that day, um, and the police were told to go down and ask them to lower it down. Um, you know, that being said, moving forward, I think, uh, today, uh, we made progress, and, um, I would like to sit down and become part of the solution, and, um, make sure that we are all on the same page as far as, you know, the, the process that's involved in getting to know each other, and getting things approved by the council. Uh, there are times that the council and the mayor disagree on issues, believe it or not.
Yeah.
But, uh, we do need to work together to make sure that, uh, you know, the right decisions are being made for our city's best interest. So, um, I, I am happy that you came to the meeting, I'm happy that you spoke, and I appreciate the council allowing you the time. Normally, they don't allow that much time for people to speak. So, uh, this was nice that the council allowed that, and, uh, again, I opened the door to meet with you, and make sure that we can work together in the future. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Moving on, communications and public and petitions?
Number one, request from Kathleen Peterson on behalf of Chautauqua County Rural Ministries to hold a second annual old-fashioned street fair at 319 Washington Avenue on August 17, 2021, with a rain date of August 14, 2021. The event will be held from 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM. We are requesting to block off Washington Avenue from Third Street to Fourth Street for the event, and also requesting garbage cans and music stage.
Any discussion, council? Again, this is their second time they did this, so everything worked out really well. I'm gonna refer this to, uh, Lieutenant Timmerman to relay this to Chief Ortolano, also the city attorney, and Department of Public Works Director. So I need a motion from Bemano, second by Nichols, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer?
Aye, carried.
Number two, request from Ryan Proffitt of Fredonia Scout Troop 267 to repaint, repaint over the graffiti on the fixtures and features, uh, I'm sorry, and the features, and fix the workbench at the skate park in Wright Park for city residents and skateboarders to enjoy as part of the Eagle Scout project for the city of Dunkirk.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, as I said in the workshop, uh, they will be working with Randy, with the DPW and the 912 guys.
912 and 2693 will be involved in the, in exactly what they're gonna do, and make sure they're okay with everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. So we'll refer this to City Department of Public Works, and both 912 and 2693 unions, first by Nichols, second by Stoyl?
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer?
Aye, carried.
Number three, request from Small Town Big Mines to renovate the baseball field into a kickball, wiffle ball field at the Ford Ward Park. Also requesting the city resurface the concrete at the outdoor skating rink.
Any discussion, council?
As I said in the workshop, this would have to go before the planning board with all the plans, and, uh, Mr. Woodbury, and, um, the, uh, resurfacing of the concrete, the ice rink, I think we discussed that the basketball court would have been a priority there, did we not, Mr. Woodbury?
We did, and we wanna take a look at the options for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need to, a motion to refer this to city attorney, department of public works, parks, recreation, and also planning board, by Bemano, second by Nichols.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer?
Aye, carried.
Number four, request from Ronaldo Miranda on behalf of the Second Chance Kids to host a basketball tournament at Wright Park Courts on Saturday, July 31st, 2021.
Any discussion, council? Uh, I need a motion to refer this to city attorney, parks department, and rec department, by Bemano, second by Stoyl?
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer?
Aye, carried.
Number five, request from Reverend Early Waller on behalf of the Friendship Baptist Church Choir to host a gospel festival on August 28, 2021, from 2:00 PM until 8:00 PM at Point Graciate Park.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, Paul, I, as in workshop, suggested they might pick a rain date just in case, with the weather we've been having, and all the pavilions being occupied, so that they have to be out in the open.
Okay, so I need a motion to refer this to the city attorney, parks department, city clerk, and, uh, for their loudspeaker permit also, Edwin?
Correct.
Yep, okay. And, uh, first by Nichols, second by Bemano?
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer?
Aye, carried.
Number six, request from Lucas Natalia on behalf of Fredonia Cycling to host two Central Connection Slow Connection slow road bicycle rides through Dunkirk on April 31, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. and September 18, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. We are requesting the assistance of the Dunkirk Police Department for traffic control for both events.
Any discussion, council? Again, this is something that we've had, I think about a month ago, I saw city clerk in it with a bunch of other people, so this would be something I'm going to refer to you. Lieutenant Timmerman, if you can just refer that also to Chief Ortolano. I need a first by Nichols, second by Stoyl.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried.
I'm going to...
Yeah, number seven was polled loudspeaker for Ronald Colwell, and what are we going to do with that, Edwin?
That got polled, they were not able to find entertainment, and I'm going to go ahead and read a request that was walked on, if that's okay with you, sir?
Yes.
To Mayor Roses and the council. Additional street lighting on the 700 block of Deer Street. I would like to request additional street lights at polls number 33, 35, and 36 through the LED lighting program for the safety and security of the neighborhood. This is between the house numbers 7, 32 through 756, Deer Street. Any help with this situation would be appreciated. Sincerely, Raymond and Deborah Maku, 749 Deer Street, Dunkirk, New York.
Any discussion, council? Received and filed.
Number eight, loudspeaker application from Tommy Roque to use DJ equipment for a party at his residence on July 31, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Any discussion, council? I did give you a list of the neighbors that he went around and had signed, so everybody seems like they're good with it, so if you guys are good with it, we'll vote on it. It'll be under my usual conditions, so I need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions. By Nichols, second by Stoyl.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried.
Number nine, loudspeaker application from Jane Henderson to use speakers for a picnic on August 20, 21, from 3:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. at the lower pavilion at Point Gratchit.
Any discussion, council? Be my usual, first by Nichols, second by Stoyl.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried.
Number 10, loudspeaker application from Kathleen Peterson on behalf of the Chautauqua County Rural Ministry to use band equipment on August 7, 2021, for the old-fashioned street fair at 319 Washington Avenue from 12:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m.
Any discussion, council? Be my usual, first by Nichols, second by Bomano.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried.
Number 11, loudspeaker application from Reynaldo Miranda on behalf of the Second Chance Kids to use speakers and microphones on July 31, 2021, from 1:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. at the Wright Park Basketball Courts.
Any discussion, council? Be my usual, by Nichols, second by Bomano.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried.
Number 12, loudspeaker application from Jason Merritt on behalf of Merritt Winery to use microphones and speakers from August 6 through the 8, 2021, at the Chautauqua County Fairgrounds for America's Great Country Wine Festival.
Any discussion, council? Be my usual, first by Nichols, second by Bomano.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried. Number seven, reports to state committees, boards of commissions, Councilmember Bomano.
Randy, you have any update about residents up at the Point area where they had that water issue? What's going on going forward?
Yeah, I would encourage people that had damage to submit a notice of claim through the proper procedure. The rain events that we had were beyond the capacity because of the sequential nature of our infrastructure, and there was some damage done. The wastewater plant had to pump stormwater nine times during the month of, so far, in three weeks into July, we've had to pump it nine times. A high number for a year is seven. So in three weeks in July, we've had to do it nine times. So we're very saturated, and we need to, I would encourage people to address these issues through the clerk's office.
Okay, and the Robin Street Tunnel, I see they're doing some work over there?
Yes. The cooperation with Sergeant Manzella, who's our IT expert, we've installed in the city electrician, a conduit under a new sidewalk on Robin Street that connects, so we can put a digital video recorder inside of a city building and not have it exposed and have the power, and put the cameras in. That was finished this week, we can, the wiring is starting, cameras will be installed. Mayor informed me that there are actions we can take regardless of who's doing the damage inside the tunnel, you're going to be watched, and we're going to take appropriate action with that. So it's a nice project, I got to meet a lot of the people on that block, they were very thankful for the project, they kept an eye on the concrete while it cured, so I'd like to thank that neighborhood, and I think we made it, if you go down there and take a look at it, we've really brightened it up, and we're going to keep the tunnel in good shape, and with the police's help, we're going to keep that enforced.
Thank you. What's the update on the Sixth Street water line?
Sixth Street water line is pending approval from Environmental Facilities Corporation, that's our funding corporation, we have the money in there. There was an environmental question they had that I answered, so we should be getting approval to finish that. That, we, once we finish that, which is important to connect the school area with the new Willbrook 2 million gallon water tank, which pretty much supplies the western portion of the North County Water District, we've taken over the entire Village of Fredonia, both prisons, everything, I'm sorry, Village of Brockton, and both prisons in Brockton. It's been good for everybody. We need to finish that part of it. We also, in the Third Ward, we're working on the Main Street booster station, hasn't been upgraded since 1967 when it was built. So that's being done by a contractor also, our crews, very skilled crews under Rob Curry and under Bob Laurie, have been doing it, they've been doing extra work there as well to make sure all the valves work, we've changed a couple valves, and it's working well. We've had an, we had an exercise with the Village of Fredonia, the interconnects worked well both ways. Fredonia needed our help yesterday, we were able to do that. And it's a tribute to the work that we're doing under the consent order, it's a 2009 consent order, we want to get that done and celebrate that.
Randy, thank you for all the info. Mr. Mayor, are we still taking our application for temps? Do we still need temps in the DPW Parks, Rec?
Yes. Yes, we still are.
Okay, how do they go about that, in case some of the people don't know?
Well, they can do it online, they can come into city hall and our personnel department.
So let the people know, we're still looking for seasonal help, we need them. One announcement, there's going to be a finance meeting August 3rd, it's Tuesday at 11:00 a.m., mayor's conference room. And also, that's great news to hear about the HUD, Mr. Mayor, Jill, thank you very much, that was a great report. Kudos to Revitalized Dunkirk, I know Mr. Fisher's here in the audience, and he's the chairman of that group, so thank you guys for the work you do, it doesn't go unnoticed. And I'd like to comment on Mr. Chris Rodriguez, thank you very much for stepping up and talking, thank you for bringing your group with you. You have a passion, you all have a passion, I spoke to you guys before, and I suggest keep, keep open the communication, because that's exactly, you touched the base on that with communication with everything. We can do better with communication, it's the council, it's the city government, and anybody else coming in here, so that's something we want to work on in going forward, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much for stepping up. That's all I have.
Thank you, council. Council Stoyl.
Just that, there's going to be a public safety meeting on July 28, 2:00 p.m. in the mayor's conference room. That's all I have.
Thank you, council. Councilmember Nichols.
Reverend, the road on Roberts Road, the paving that the county did was wonderful, hope they continue. At our DPW meeting, I had concerns, and I talked with Mr. Woodbury about doing a sticker program for recycling and for brush collection on Lucas Avenue to help out with local people coming there, I don't know where we stand on that right now. And also with the pothole issue, I have asked now seven times if by some miracle, they could start brush collection and pothole filling and road paving in our lovely Fourth Ward, and it seems to fall on deaf ears. I don't know why the transition can't be made so that we're not at the, caught at the short end of the stick, as they say, by the end of the year, nothing or partial gets done. I have people on McDonough Street whose road has not been touched in 12 years, they are in desperate need of some attention down there. And my last comment is, we have our summer better than other, Summer Camps is still open for the fourth week. There are, as of 1:30 today, there are about 12 openings for the fourth week, which is August 2nd through the 6th. And I'll tell you, our crew that was up there for camp did a super, super job with the children that have enrolled in it from Dunkirk and non-residents. They did a, last Wednesday, even though we had a bad start with rain, they did their own tie dyeing, they learned how to do tie dyeing right hands-on during camp, and this was the shirt that they got, well, this was my granddaughter's, the shirt they got to take home to wear forever and have memories and how to be creative. Ryan Hall and his crew have done just a special remarkable job. So if you know anybody that wants to do camp, call 366-9885, there's still openings, week four, August 2nd to August 6th. That's all I have, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Does the council get any shirts?
I didn't even get one.
Yeah. Okay, so what I'm, what I'm going to propose tonight, after listening to everybody, you know, I was here for, I made up my mind already what I was going to do, but after sitting down and listening to everybody and all your participants tonight, what I'm going to, what I, what I'm going to suggest to the council about this permit for Unique Car Club is that we table it tonight, and I want to meet with Juan, and Chris, you're more than welcome, and I want to meet with the police chief, the mayor, and the council, and I want to sit down and hash some things out before, before we give you the okay, okay?
I got a question for you, sir. When can we meet?
Well, I'll get, when the chief gets back from vacation, and we'll set it up as soon as possible.
Because I, if, you know, if I, if we do get the okay.
Yeah.
I have to order these trophies and...
It'll be by the, it'll be by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have a amended resolution number 46-2021, July 6, 2021, approval of 2021 Annual Action Plan for the City of Dunkirk's Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program.
I need a motion to amend.
So moved.
By Bomano, second by Nichols, clerk Calerole.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried. Now I need a motion to vote on the resolution.
So moved.
By Nichols.
Second.
Second by Bomano.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried.
We have to go through the motions?
No, no, not this one. We don't have to do the other one, no. So we're going right to a pre-fide resolution. And that'd be 51.
Number 50, resolution authorizing submission of CDBG CARES Act grant from New York State Office of Homes and Community Renewal.
Any discussion, council?
Does Jill want to give an update during the meeting now, Ford?
Yeah, sure. This is an application that we're putting into the state for some CARES Act money they receive. This particular project fits in the city's plan to provide free Wi-Fi along the entire waterfront. The project, it's a good project, it's going to be installing Wi-Fi hotspots throughout the entire Point Gratchit and Wright Parks, and install solar cellphone charging stations at the Point, at the Pier, and at Wright Park.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Clerk Calerole.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried.
Number 51, resolution rescinding loudspeaker permit for Unique Car Club.
Need a motion to table this?
Make a motion to table.
By Nichols.
Second.
Second by Bomano.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried. New business, seeing none, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Nichols.
Second.
Second by Bomano.
Councilmember Bomato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember At-Large Vandenboer.
Aye, carried. Motion, meetings adjourned.
I just want to make one announcement, do you want to say anything on night out for August 3rd, Mayor?
Yeah, we, I know if the chief was here, he would be saying it, but National Night Out is August 3rd, and we encourage and invite everyone in the community to come on out. This is an opportunity for the community to interact with our police officers and our firemen, so that we can better our relations. So please come out and join us, August 3rd, I believe it starts at 5 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken.
I think so.
No, you're not getting an extra week.